Good morning, everyone. It's 9:00 AM. I'd like to welcome everybody to the November 1st, 2021 work session for the Limestone County Commission. And before we get started this morning, a little housekeeping here. I'd like to welcome Drew Deal. He is our new county attorney, just starting with us this morning. If we have any questions, probably a lot of questions will be addressed to the attorney situation. And I want to thank everybody for being here today. And we do have a three-minute time limit on the public comment. If you're right in the middle of something, if you hear everybody, I'll just kind of finish up. I mean, we do try to where everybody can have a chance to speak, and we will be here between the meeting and after the meeting, too. And there will be no action taken on a map today. This is just a public hearing to try to adopt a map before we can advertise for a map. So I just wanted to get all that cleared up. So anyways, with all that saying, I guess we've got several public comments, Ellen, so...
We do. The first one is Sherri Dobbins.
Ms. Dobbins, you mind stepping up to the microphone, please?
I'd like to say good morning to the board.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And everyone here. I am Sherri Dobbins.
Thank you.
And my purpose here this morning is to bring to your attention the Adopted Citizen Participation Plan. This plan was discussed in the minutes of the Limestone County Commission meeting dated July the 6th, 2020, which is in the handout, page number 54. On the 86th line in these minutes, the Adopted Citizen Plan is mentioned. A discussion is being made in Limestone County if Limestone County would apply for a Community Development Block grant, also known as a CDVG. And I quote Mr. Terry Acuff, who was of the Community Consultant Incorporated. He says, "The county is considering applying for a CDVG grant, and before you do that, you're required, in accordance with the Adopted Citizen Participation Plan, to have a public hearing, notify the public that the county is considering applying for a grant." Steps were, as I understand, have a public hearing detailing your plan, see if there's any objectives for the public, and if no objection, see if it qualifies or not. If it qualifies, then come back to a resolution. These are not the steps followed in this redistricting. So let's go back to the drawing board and start with step one. Have a public hearing detailing the plan. Now, it seems that vacating a portion of a road is important enough to have a public hearing. So you see in the minutes of the Limestone County Commission, August the 16th, 2019, about the second paragraph, and this is noted, page 29 of the handout. It was so important to have a public hearing that Commissioner Jason Black made a motion to set a public hearing, not once on this date, but twice. Commissioner Black also seconded a motion to set a public hearing, first for a portion -- a portion of Hampton Lane, second for a portion of Buzzard Root Road. What a name. This motion was carried with no objection. I live in District 3, and I stand here to tell you that all of District 3 and 4 are as important as vacating portions of a road. So we appeal to your common sense to do what is right, fair, and in line with your past way of informing the public. Do it again, Commissioner Black, as you did for vacating. Make a motion to set a public hearing for the redistricting of District 3.
Thank you, Ms. Dobbins. Next?
Yes, Mr. Brian Lorge.
Mr. George?
Lorge.
Lorge.
My name is Brian Lorge. I live at 19639 Sharp Road in Limestone County. I'm a resident of the County Commission District 1. I appreciate the opportunity to address the commission. I wish to address the redistricting effort that will be discussed during the upcoming meetings. This is a critical process in our democracy to ensure all people have a fair and equitable say in their government. Decisions made in the next few weeks will affect Limestone County for the next 10 years. With the rapid growth in our county and the expected continued growth, it is imperative we get this right. We need to take the time to get public input. I strongly encourage the commission to hold a series of public meetings and town halls to solicit inputs from citizens of Limestone County. All citizens should have the right to voice their opinions on the proposed maps and have the opportunity to present any alternative maps if they provide more effective representation for the people. By my calculations, over 8,000 citizens will have their county commission district changed as a result of this effort. This is not an insignificant number. Ensuring this effort preserves the communities of interest within our county is vitally important and its fundamental right of our system of government. Every citizen must have an equal chance of making their voices heard and electing the candidate of their choice. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lorge.
Thank you.
Next?
Mr. Will Woodruff.
Mr. Woodruff.
So I see the new proposed district drawing of the map of Limestone County. I think it adds back to the District 3 population most of the original voters. So, and I think it entails about 21% of the black voting population of that district. And I think that that's about where we were before, but it's not nearly where we need to be in the reading I'm addressing this commission in today. I would like for this commission to consider, as it has been done in all other parts of the state of Alabama, is to consider some alternative districts and maybe to add districts or and/or go to something like cumulative voting where the minority or the people of color or specifically black community could elect candidates of their choice. And I don't think this is too much to ask of the commission because I know you guys are open-minded, and I think you want to advance this county to the 21st century and make sure that things done here is in accordance to the way that the rest of the state of Alabama is doing and the rest of our country, you know, just for the privilege of our citizens so we can share into the liberty that all the rest of our state and country is sharing in. So I would humbly ask this commission, starting today, to look at avenues where we could create a more fair and better process for our citizens of Limestone County to elect a candidate of their choice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm Bernard Hamilton, resident of the Alabama NAACP and a resident of Limestone County. I live out in District 2, out in East Limestone, have been for about 20 years. Today, I come before you to bring your attention this morning to what we believe is possibly violation of the Voting Rights Act. Of course, the Voting Rights Act protects the voting rights of particular African-Americans and has been in existence since 1865. And we think the voting rights violation is an attempt to dilute the voting rights of African-Americans across Limestone County, but in particular in District 3. And we appreciate Commissioner Daley meeting with us last week to discuss this particular issue. We'll state that we need a method of voting in Limestone County that will assure African-Americans have an opportunity to elect the candidate of their choice. Elect the candidate of their choice. And as I travel across this state and meet with mayors and county commissioners and county officials, most bodies have an African-American, at least one African-American on their board, whether that's a county commissioner, whether it's County Board of Education, City Council, et cetera. But when we look at Limestone County, we do not see that. And Limestone County is a growing county in North Alabama and really across the state and perhaps across the nation. And so we need to ensure that we have a method of electing representation that look like Limestone County, that look like what we want Limestone County to project throughout the state. And so as Webber mentioned, cumulative voting is one of those methods that has been used in Chilton County, has been used in Calera, has been used recently in Pleasant Grove City Council meetings. So it's not anything new to Alabama. And I want to give a quote from Judge Scott Kugler, who, a federal judge who made the ruling in the Pleasant Grove case. He says, "As Pleasant Grove has demonstrated, a fair process can lead to fair representation." Judge Scott Kugler said in the consent decree in Pleasant Grove case, "The court has examined the use of cumulative voting in the state of Alabama and specifically finds that this remedy has been used in the state to resolve claims of vote dilution." And so we want asking Limestone County to take that into consideration and create a method of electing an African-American or the African-American person of choice to the county commission. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Mr. Hamilton.
Thank you.
Mr. James Lucas?
Mr. Lucas?
My concerns have been addressed.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas.
Thank you.
Mr. Mark Wilson?
Mr. Wilson? Okay. Okay.
Mr. Kenneth Hines?
Good morning, Mr. Travis.
My name is Kenneth Hines. I'm a resident -- sorry, I lost my glasses. And I'm a resident of District 2. Thank you, Chairman Daley and members of the commission for hearing my comments. Thank you also for the action you are proposing to correct the impact of previous redistricting proposals on the black population of Commission District 3. I understand County Engineer Mark Massey was instrumental in preparing this change, and I thank him also. Your new proposal demonstrates your sensitivity to some of the circumstances that selectively affect black people and their access to our political institutions. I hope you won't mind if I expand on that. Black people have experienced our country differently from most others. Their history as slaves and victims of Jim Crow laws, separate but equal education, and isolated neighborhoods gives them a perspective worthy of everyone's attention. It is a perspective that should be at the table when governments at all levels are making decisions. We have singled out black people for mistreatment through most of our history. I request that you single them out again, but this time for a continuing dialogue with the NAACP on how we might reorganize our county to give them a realistic chance of electing a black person to the Limestone County Commission. Other local governments have done that, and it is a benefit to all. I am a white person concerned about the absence of black voices among our elected officials. I do not believe that we have a government of, by, and for the people if some of the people must speak only from the audience and never from behind the gavel. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hines.
Mr. Kenneth Hines?
He just went.
I'm sorry.
You've got two chances.
Ms. Diane Steele?
Ms. Steele? How you doing this morning?
Good morning. I'm not going to be long. I didn't even prepare a speech. I just want to make a couple of comments, but first of all, I have a question. You just mentioned before we started that there will be no actions taken today relative to any map?
No, ma'am.
That is good news, okay? Because that is exactly really why we're here, even though I would like to say this. Chairman Daley, I appreciate you after the press conference. I have to admit now, it was after the press conference. You were very gracious with the meeting with us. You were gracious in that meeting. We appreciate you. We even spoke with several of the commissioners, and you all were as well. Some of you were willing to meet with us on the spur of the moment, on Friday, and we appreciate that. And you've even gone as far as to recreate another map. And I know that's not probably public right now, but we appreciate that. But at the same time, what you're doing today, not taking any action, is very appropriate until we can have public hearings. All I would do is ask that you advertise the public hearing so that we can, people can really find out that there is one being held. A county this size, you maybe don't even need that many or just one, but please advertise that, get the word out so that we can have input from those that want to have input. And I appreciate your time. Appreciate you.
Thank you. You need to address a little bit about this map here. Is this who you want to address a little bit?
That's for you guys. I mean, I presented, I put that together for you guys.
We'll talk about it down the other part. Okay. Do we have another one?
We do not.
Nobody else?
I want to.
Go ahead. Yeah, come on, sir.
Thank you. Thank you very much. My name is Eugene English. I'm a retired military officer, Gulf War veteran, major, retired. When I came this morning, I came, I had to be honest with you, I came with the most pessimistic attitude. And it stemmed from, I live in East Limestone, been out there for about, maybe now about almost 30 years. I'm originally from Ohio, to be honest with you, retired, last provost marshal out of Redstone Arsenal. And I have developed a very pessimistic attitude about white leaders in Limestone County, that they are not ever, has no empathy toward the African-American community and their concerns and the issues. Now, that's personally, that's my personal. I just become numb to it. I just think that as long as you guys have the numbers, and no matter what, you can hold all the meetings you want, you can hold all the, the NAACP can protest all they want. It just seems like when it's all said and done, it's always what you guys want and never anything compromising toward them. That's just what I have come to think. It's a terrible thought that I have, but it's really an honest opinion that I have. And so coming here this morning, I have been very pessimistic about it, that there won't be any changes. But I listened to what's been asked, and it seems like they have done the homework, have gave a great compromise solution. The only issue is that will you even really listen to their solution? Will you really consider it honestly? I really enjoyed the gentleman, I don't know his name, that came up and spoke, he was white, and said, "Hey, guys, I'm African-American. We need representation." I've experienced this same pessimism in the Board of Education. I've experienced it in here, and it just seems like there's no, so my thing is that I'm asking you to take us in consideration. You know, I fought for the country for 20 years. Can I be, have some representation when I live in Limestone County? I mean, face it, if we do get one African-American on here, is, you know, from what I've seen, it's always going to be 6 to 1, 4 to 1, 5 to 1 votes just about on everything if it's strictly, if it's strictly an African-American issue that's involved in it. So that's really not going to change anything, really, but it will give some public appearance change, and so my appeal. Look at it, make a fair decision on it, and support it. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. No, okay. Nobody else wants to address anything while we're in here? Okay. All righty. Well, thank everybody for their public comments and being in here today, and we'll move on while she stepped outside to get his name. First thing on here will be the discussion of resolution to accept the new district boundary lines in order to equalize population amongst four districts. And we have proposed some maps here. This is time that we can discuss it, you know, as a, we cannot discuss things in a public, now that we're in a public meeting, so that's why we're here today to discuss these issues. Does any commissioner have any input or anything they want to talk about this proposed maps that we have out?
I do. First off, thank y'all for all coming out today. Second off, I have, I don't, I don't understand about there not being a public meeting. This right here is a requirement by the people that we got the grant from. The second thing is, we release it, we put it in the press. We don't have like a meeting place that we say, "We're going to be at Point A at 9 o'clock, and y'all come in, anything that you might have." We have to have public meetings, and sometimes we have to have extra readings on stuff to make sure we follow the guidelines set by the state of Alabama, not set by us. So the public, not having a public meeting was not something that we didn't do, it was something that we followed the guidelines that we had to follow, and it has taken place. When you release this original map, it gives the opportunity for the public to look at it, to pat you on the back, to slap you in the face, to be happy about it, to be mad about it, or to voice their opinion. And y'all have voiced your opinion through social media, through the media, and meeting with him, and contacting the rest of us. I was out of town from last Wednesday until last night about 5 o'clock. But when Mr. Lucas contacted me, Ms. Steele contacted me, and Mr. Woodruff contacted me, it's one of those things where we're really not at liberty to discuss something that is on the table that y'all are coming in to talk about, that we can talk back with you. I can tell you that on my way home Friday, that I contacted our engineer and I, we went over some ideas. It was never, never, ever in the interest of one commissioner or the entire commission that we cut any representation out from any group, from female to male, from black to white, from Hispanic, from Asian, from anything what there was, that was not, that was not the interest. The interest was is to take a population that we did not have to provide road services for. It just fell into the point that that area that, that it came out right there was the area closest to the city limits, which was Chilling Street, Washington Street, Southfield Street, all those up through there, that if we redrew the districts, District 4 wouldn't be under a burden to have to come over further and add, I don't know, what was it, 120 something miles to their district? That's, that's what it was. So Friday, coming back from, from my trip, I was in the passenger seat, and I contacted Mark while he was eating. I always laugh and say it was his second lunch probably, but it wasn't. It was his only lunch for the day. I contacted him, and I said, "Can we find that same population somewhere that won't affect this group that is most concerned?" And he said, "It's going to take a while." I said, "Well, we don't have a while. We have until Monday." So Mark got his, the GIS software out, along with, I think, Hunter Dolls, who was, who's a engineering assistant. I was just outside of Memphis when he called back, and he said, "Okay, I think I got it." So he contacted me, and he said, "I'm taking Kane Break, Lindsey Lane, all-white vote out of your district, and I'm putting them back." And I went, "Awesome. Fantastic. Kane Break, I don't know, in the last two elections, I probably carried it by 85%. That's not important to me." I really didn't care about that percentage. What I was most concerned about is Kane Break wasn't up here complaining. Y'all were complaining. So what we did is, we didn't appease you, we met you in the middle, and we gave you, not as Mr. Lucas on his voicemail message said, "We've decreased it from 20% to 17% with the original map." Mr. Lucas said, and I didn't know how we were going to do this to begin with, he said, "If anything, I would like to be able to increase District 3 with the population of African-Americans." Mr. Lucas, Mark Massey figured it out. It's 21% now. It's not 20%. It's 21%. I had no idea how that would happen, but it's 21%. So for y'all to come out and do what you did with your local government, it's exactly what every citizen's supposed to do. I don't care if they're black, yellow, white, red, it doesn't make any difference to me. As far as it being the NAACP, that's fantastic, too, because what some people don't understand, and some of you ladies and gentlemen in this room may know, is that I received a major thrashing in 2014 from the state GOP for coming and being, participating in the NAACP meeting out at, at the park on Hind Street. I was the only GOP candidate who came out and represented my constituents that were going to be electing me, which is y'all, black, white, red, yellow. I didn't care. I tell the people that when I run on the Republican ticket, it makes no difference to me, because if a Baptist, a Church of Christ, or Methodist calls wanting something, I treat every one of them the same. If an atheist calls, I treat him the same. If a black calls, a white calls, a man calls, a woman calls, we treat them all the same. So I wanted to let y'all know, I have received a little bit of flack from this because it happened to be District 3, but I had as little input in it as any of these other men did. It was simply a software program that was done. Did the software program not do the way that some people wanted? Yes. At the end of the day, it didn't do what we wanted either, because we don't want press conferences. We don't want anyone thinking that we have done something that is personal, because by all means, it is as far from personal for me as anyone will ever get. Not only that, today I'm telling you that it didn't make any difference to me how the district was redrawn, because I am not seeking reelection for District 3. So it didn't make any difference to me if it was 100% black or 100% white, as long as it was done the way the United States Constitution and the federal government told us to do it. So with that being said, thank y'all for coming. I appreciate every bit of your input, and just to let you know, it was never anything for Jason Black or for any of these other men up here that was anything done personal or anything that may have upset each one of y'all. I am sorry. I apologize for the confusion, and I ask that you still go back and not be pessimistic of your local government, but to support your local government and work with the local government to see what we can get done for all the people of Limestone County. With that being said, I thank y'all very much for being here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comment?
I think Commissioner Black pretty well covered us, and, you know, did a good job. Mark, what's the deadline on this?
I think we're supposed to have it completed 120 days prior to the next election that it's going to be included on, and so, I mean, we have a little bit of time. So I know, like, we had advertised for approval, but, I mean, this was just expediency, just Troy tried to advertise and be able to receive comments over a two-week period of time, and then, but, I mean, I know that I put together this other plan, and everybody hadn't had an opportunity to look at that. So as Colin mentioned, I mean, giving some additional time for everybody to review and give comment, this, I mean, this, that's just what this work session is for, is for y'all to decide whether or not it stays on the meeting. But, so I think we have time, if y'all, however y'all want to proceed, and y'all, y'all give me direction and guidance, because that's...
Do you have 120 days? Do you know what the 120 days is?
I don't know exactly, but it's maybe first, middle of December, and we're getting, we're getting close.
Yeah, this map here, now, this map here, for us, we cannot adopt this map anyway. We had to...
We haven't advertised this one.
We have to, for the public to understand this, we put the other map out. That's why this, you know, everybody says a town hall meeting, that's kind of what this is today. We put a map out there, because we have to put a plan together and send it out to the public, and then we get public comment back, and this is why we're here today. And this is the map that we're looking into now. That's what we're here today, is discussing this map. And so, like I said, I mean, I appreciate everybody's input, and I know Mr. Hamilton, and so is Mr. Webber, he is, Woodruff has, you know, announced other voting methods and all. The current system we're on in Alabama right now, in this county, is a district system, and each commissioner has to represent a population of 25% of Limestone system. And each commissioner has to represent a population of 25 percent of Limestone County, because we're divided into four districts. And for equal representation, that's the way that the system that we're currently on. So with that being processed out, that we are... That is a... So we're trying to look at a way to represent every citizen. And Mr. Lucas, me and him had a long conversation. I worked, me and Mark Massey worked on this map after everybody was gone Friday. I mean, I stayed up here, and I called Mr. Woodruff back Friday evening, and Mr. Lucas, and I made sure we got this map out to where everybody could share this map, to where everybody could have their concerns out there. Is our system perfect? No, it's not. But it's the current system that we're currently on. And that's the way that we have to do business, the way the county is structured right now. You know, one of the main concerns that I had through all of this was, was representation of every citizen of Limestone County. You know, and as everybody knows, District Four, as we sit today, has more road miles, and District Two has the less, and these two here is kind of in the middle. We're trying to figure out a way that we can still serve every citizen of Limestone County. And like Mr. Black said, I represent everybody. I mean, I'm elected countywide, so these maps mean nothing to me. I mean, it does, it's in how we represent the county, but as far as an election, to me, it makes no difference because I'm elected countywide. Now, these four guys here are elected by district, and that does, and Mr. Simonton has, and I mean, like I said, I mean, I'm willing to look at other options. I mean, but right now, we have to get something to the state to where we can worry about this next election cycle we have coming, because it's the law. And so with all that being said, today, what we're proposing is this map. And if anybody has any public comment or any situation with this map, feel free to get with us. Mr. Simonton can tell you, I will be glad to meet with anybody one-on-one. I'm sure these other guys will be glad to meet with anybody. And we want to hear public comment, and we may even have a public hearing or something. That would be fine. But I mean, as far as it goes, we're just trying to get together a proposal to what it's going to look like in the future.
Can I address again?
Just a second. I mean, just a second. Oh, you got one more question or something?
Yes.
All right, just go ahead.
Okay. My question is, through the commissioners, I mean, would you all consider any type of cumulative voting a method? I mean, I know that's a tough question to throw in this early in the morning, but, I mean, is that something that at least you consider?
It's probably not something I'd be able to answer a week from now, because what you've got to do is, you've got to go through what the legalities of it are. How did... I've talked to Chilton County's county commission. I'm very good friends with one of them, and he's told me that they can vote, I think it's eight, or nine, maybe nine, that they get to vote. And they can actually split it up, which they could vote one for me, and one for him, and one for him, and one for him, and one for her. So I don't really know how it goes. So I know it's something that our legal counsel would have to go through, because this would completely change the way that we have elections in Limestone County. So I don't think it's something that if it was on the agenda for the next meeting, we would be able to just make a decision on, because it has to be something that has to be discussed. That will be something that probably discussed with our state representatives, and our state senators, and those people too.
Well, I specifically worked with the people in Pleasant Grove, and it was the mayor and the city council that we worked with. And of course, it went to federal court, and then this was a compromise, because we wanted to a different type of election in Pleasant Grove. But the cumulative voting was a method that we came up with, actually, the city came up with, to satisfy the judge, first of all, and then satisfy the citizens' request. And so my only question is, is it something that you all will consider looking at?
Mr. Simonton, like I told you today, I'm willing to look at anything.
I know where you are, Commissioner Dale. I'm talking about the other commissioners.
And I'm sure that all of them will take a chance to look at anything that's put out in front of us.
Okay. Okay. All right. Well, maybe we can meet with a couple of you, two at a time, to kind of get more...
That'd be fine.
...input from you.
Thank you, Mr. Simonton. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to mention one more thing, if I could. You've got to take into consideration your voting precincts in this map that we've got here. I was talking to Judge Woodruff all ago. He's not had an opportunity to look at any of it on the state level, our level, federal level. We've got to take into consideration what it's going to do to our voting precincts, too.
Yeah, like I said, this is all proposal maps and all. One of the things, you know, that when I look at these maps, and I know y'all even proposed a map, the NAACP did to me. Well, the main issue that I had with that map is, and this is a problem that I had with it was, you know, you take some African Americans that live in that district down there. Y'all cut some African Americans out of that district that has lived in District Three their entire life. You know, like the whole, down toward the river down there, you know, we take, you know, like the Bedford family down there, you know, they had, you know, the map that y'all had proposed, you know, cut them into District Four, you know. So I mean, that was, you know, a lot of these people, you know, we've redone these districts over every 10 years they're redone. And I know a lot of people that, you know, like down in, I know, down in the Quonkot area, y'all used to live in District Two. See, I mean, you know, it's kind of a, you know, they actually were in District Two for years. And now they're in District Three because of the population. And just the county has grown so much on the eastern quadrant of the county, to get roughly 25,000 people in, you know, to, you know, it's not many over 25,000 people in the whole western part of the county. And, you know, and we have like Ms. Angie Maples that works here in this office, that lives over in the north part of the county. Well, you know, when you're getting money to design for 25 percent of the roads and all this, you know, we want to represent her well, too. You know, that's, you know, that's what I'm saying. I look at every citizen. And like I said, we'll be here through the meeting and after the meeting, and if any questions, concerns, and everybody can tell, I mean, sometimes, like last week, I was out of town at a meeting, and when I got back, I reached back with Wilbert, and we got a meeting set up, and we had a meeting Friday, and I appreciate all y'all's input. And I think it was a good meeting, and it was, like I said, y'all, we asked, you know, what y'all requested. We met that request in this new map, you know, with the 20 percent. So, and I want y'all to, and I thank y'all for coming. I mean, I appreciate it. And so any more discussion with this map?
Do you need a motion to table this?
No, this is just, this is a work session. We can just knock it off.
Okay.
It was just, this is, that's the whole reason...
On the agenda.
Yeah, just, we'll just take it off of the agenda. The number one, number one to approve a map will not be on the 10 o'clock agenda.
Okay.
All right. So we are... So another more discussion, we need to move on at a lot of time.
I'm going to get a copy of that map.
Oh, we'll be sure to get you a copy before we leave here. And if anybody wants a copy today, we'll get you a copy between the meetings, okay? It will be also advertised on our website, just like the last one was. All right. So any more discussion with this map altogether? And I want to thank everybody for their input, and everybody for being here today. We will move on to the next thing on the agenda, will be to approve a resolution to adopt of the covetets of one acre of real estate property located at the corner of Blackman Road and US 72, of the Healthcare Authority of Athens, Alabama, and Athens, Limestone, and Limestone County, known as doing business as Athens-Limestone Hospital, for the purpose of operating a medical facility to provide medical services and healthcare to the general public and its citizens of Limestone County. And I want to, I know Commissioner Black will touch on this. This is a piece of property that's out on the corner of Blackman Road. It used to be known as the Blackman Senior Center, or what was it, Community Center or something?
Community Center.
And this will be, we're going to donate this piece of property over to the hospital, and to where they can put ambulance service and stuff out there, and other things. Commissioner Black, he's been working on this for several years, to help service the western side of the county, and to get some service out there. So you want to, I'll let you touch on this, you've worked so hard on it.
Yeah, we, this was something that the Board of Education had, and it was a sitting out there, and it was not being used, and it was really running down. I went to the previous superintendent and asked him if he would be interested in getting rid of that building. They really didn't know the Board of Education even owned it. And so we purchased that as the Limestone County Commission a few years back. Took a little while to get the deed worked out, but my interest was to provide a satellite ambulance service from Athens-Limestone Hospital for the people of Reed, Clements, Tanner, and then even north to the Owens community, because I think what we had done a couple of years ago was, I had worked out where if they're sitting at Athens Hospital, and they had to get to Clements High School, or they had to get to Brown's Ferry Nuker Plant, that putting that ambulance service and that satellite office out there saved 17 minutes. 17 minutes is a long time. If you've got a family member that's had a heart attack, or an accident, or a child is choking, or you wake up and you're having chest pain, 17 minutes is an eternity, because 30 seconds is if you're in that situation. So meeting with Athens-Limestone Hospital and the people that were interested, they are very, very happy to do it. They're wanting to do it throughout the county. I think we already have one that is out toward East Limestone.
Have one at Elkmont Fire Hall.
And one at Elkmont Fire Hall. This now puts one over on that side of the county, so that Huntsville-Brown's Ferry, and Reed Road, Blackman Road, and those areas right there will now have an ambulance service that's closer to provide help. And then also, we discussed a number of accidents on Highway 72, crossing where S and Z, and down around Clements, and Little Elk Community, and all that, coming out where the Lehigh Bridge is, that maybe we can get an ambulance there quicker if something goes wrong. So that's, that was my intentions, and I'm glad to say that Athens Hospital has accepted it, and will start working on it very, very soon. Thank you.
And like I said, you know, one of the things, you know, in a health issue, it's like it's our life-saving, you know, so that's good for the whole community. You got something, Commissioner?
No.
Okay. Anybody else have any more conversation with it? All right. So moving on, we have no contracts, agreements, and grants. We do have a budget revision on the agenda today. The first part of it there is the library. It's time to pay the insurance on the library, and we pay half, city pays half, so we had to make a budget revision to pay our half of the library, on the Athens Library. And then the other one is in the litter patrol. We transferring money for a piece of equipment and a vehicle, and it'll be a transfer of $43,650, and the top one is 60606. So any discussion with any one of those budget revisions?
The litter patrol, the $35,000 is what on a truck for last year?
Yes.
And I never did purchase one, couldn't find what we were looking for, so that's a carryover, more or less. And I think the other is a trailer for District Four.
Yeah. And this will be paid for out of, you know, so it's just budget revisions to pay for new equipment. Any discussion more with either item? And I think one item's District Four, and one item's District One.
Yeah.
All right. So moving on, we have no emergency purchases, we have no board appointments, but I do have some board appointments coming up, and I have a gentleman in the room, Mr. Rainey, that's looking into being on the DHR board, and I have got his information, so we'll be talking with him on that. And award of bids, we have one bid award of American Paper and Twine for sanitary supplies. Any discussion with it? All right. And then personnel action, we have several personnel action items. We have a number one on here be to approve, hire Mallory Townsend. I'll just read them, then we'll discuss them in a minute. Mallory Townsend, as a communications officer, approved to promote Irma Mayella Sagadio Flores from the tag clerk to the title clerk in the license commission, approved to transfer Molly Peck Hamilton from administrative clerk to tag clerk in the license commission. And I will stop right there. Anybody got any discussion with any one of those three?
Mr. Chairman, I'll be abstaining from the vote on one of those in the commission meeting.
All right. Does anybody else have any discussion with any one of the three? All right. So moving on, then the next part of it will be to approve, amend the staffing plan, to change HR coordinator to payroll coordinator, and change staff accountant to the HR specialist. And I'll explain here in a second on that. This is our HR position, and we're splitting it. We've been talking about this for several years, and the way the county has grown, I mean, everybody in this room knows the county has grown, and it's just too much work for one person to do payroll and HR. And so, I mean, any corporation with 280 employees probably has five or six people doing payroll and personnel. We have one, so that's just a, we're splitting that job to create a position there for HR specialist. So any more discussion with it? All right. All right. Then, of course, the number five and all going on, we'll kind of go along with that, will be to approve job description for payroll coordinator and HR specialist, and to promote Rodney Elkins, and that's in District Four, to equipment operator one slash litter patrol driver. He'll be paid from the solid waste and the gas fund. So any discussion with him, or the other position there. And then number seven is a personnel action to approve family medical leave absence for Joe Moss, beginning November the 22nd of 2021, and it'll be ending January the 14th of 2022. Any discussion with him? So have no more discussion of any personnel action anywhere, right? All right. We'll move on to merit increases. I think we have 22 listed below. Does anybody have any discussion with anybody on the list, or any conflicts? All right. No more of that. We'll be moving on to the engineer's report. Mr. Massey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've got a few subdivisions for your consideration. But first off, the Highland Ridge subdivision, the first one on the list, we need to remove that from the agenda. It, we were, we didn't receive everything we needed to complete the final inspection, so we're going to remove that from the agenda and move that to the next meeting. So the remaining items on the agenda are Albert Fogg's Farm subdivision. This is a replat of part of Track Eight. This is a minor for preliminary and final, affecting three lots in District Two. This is west side of Oakdale Road, approximately a quarter mile south of Alabama Highway 251. Oakleaf Estates subdivision, replat of lots 2A and 3A, minor for preliminary and final, affecting one lot in District Two. This is approximately one and a quarter mile south, or miles north of Highway 72, east side of East Limestone Road. We have Lindsey and Grisham Acres, number two. This is a replat of Lot One, Two, and Three. This is minor, preliminary, and final. It's adjusting three lots to two at 1715 Wells Road. Elk River Mills subdivision, this is a replat of Track Four. This is a minor preliminary and final, creating two lots in District Four, approximately one mile west of Alabama Highway 99, on the north side of Elk River Mills Road. We have the Estates at Piney Chapel. This is a replat of lots nine through 17. This is a minor for preliminary and final, affecting five lots in District One. This is east side of Piney Chapel and Dugger Road intersection. And then Shaw Estates, this is a replat of part of Lot One, minor, it's a minor for preliminary and final, creating two lots from that one in District Three. This is the southeast corner of Snake and Ripley Road intersection. That's all.
Thank you, Mark. Does anybody have any discussion with any one of the subdivisions? And I will say that one of the landowners in this one, joined with this subdivision, had reached out to me, and we have got this issue worked out, so that was good deal. All right. So moving on, other business, in lieu of time, we're getting short on time here. We're just selling eight items out of maintenance, just surplus equipment, just small little knickknakis. Anybody have any discussion with any one of them?
What are they going to work with?
Well, I think this, I think a lot of this don't even run anymore. I mean, I think...
I know. I was sitting there looking at, there's four lawn mowers on here, and a chipper, and the floor polishers. Our floors are going to be filthy, and we're not going to have any grass.
Well, I read in there, one of them said it didn't have a cord on the floor polisher. One, two chippers, two of them don't run, one of them don't have an engine on it. I mean, it's just junk surplus equipment.
Understood.
All right. The report of officers, Commissioner Samonton?
I don't have anything at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bartel, Commissioner Black?
I don't have anything at this time.
I don't have anything.
And I'll hold mine that way, if anybody wants to speak with any of us during the meeting. We've got about 10 minutes here, so we'll recess until 10 a.m. Thank y'all.